The council meeting for Monday, July 11th. For those of you wishing to join us, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a quorum of the council here this evening. Six of the seven members are present. Councilman Lanting was unable to join us. Mr. Rothweiler, are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there are no amendments this evening.
Thank you. We also have no proclamations this evening, and we will have general public input in just a moment. But because a couple of our young attendees who are receiving appreciation plaques this evening have another engagement relatively soon, I'm going to go ahead and jump to item number one under items for consideration for presentation of appreciation plaques to Anna Barr and Jessie Stroup in recognition of their service on the Twin Falls Youth Council, and turn it over to Vice Mayor Suzanne Hawkins.
Thank you very much. So first of all, if I could have Anna and Jessie come forward and face the audience. My turn to embarrass you. So I have officially been working with our city's youth council for four years, and from day one Jessie has been by my right-hand side. She started out learning the processes we go through, and in the last four years has become quite the leader and a teacher to others. She has set a great example on integrity in government and training for others and showing caring, compassion, and has been just a real delight to spend time with. Anna, on the other hand, has been with us for a couple of years. However, I have known Anna personally since she was six weeks old, probably. So I've had the privilege of watching her grow up to be such a fine young woman. She's been an inspiration to others that have joined our youth council. She has put forth a lot of effort, and in the last year, these two ladies have led our youth council as president and vice president, and they have just given so much back to our community in volunteerism and service to our community. And I just ask all of you to join me now in applauding them for all of their hard efforts.
Okay, so, like she said, I've been doing youth council for five years, and when I first started, I joined because my cousin Jonah was doing it. And then I found that I really, really enjoyed it, and I found it fun to get to know a lot of people in my community. And I've especially found it enjoyable to get to work with Suzanne and get to know her personally. And I cherish the friendship that we have together and hope that even when I'm out of the youth council, I can still be involved in some things that we do, the trail cleanup. I know I still want to do that, so...
You betcha.
I'm not out of that for another two years. I just wanted to thank all of you guys also for giving me the opportunity, for keeping the youth council going, and for being involved. So, thank you.
Like Suzanne said, I've only been in youth council for two years, but I've really enjoyed everything that we've done, being able to help my community and all the service projects we have done. And I'd like to thank Suzanne for how much she helps the youth council. And I am going to miss it.
Upward and onward, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, Anna and Jessie, thank you both so much for the service you've given to the youth council and to our community, and for being a part of helping to make good things happen in Twin Falls. So, thank you very much. And thank you Suzanne for the work that you do with that group. You do an amazing job. Thank you. So we will back up now to the general public input. So this is an opportunity for members of the community to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda this evening. I see we have some folks here who have been here over the last couple of weeks as well, and would ask that you please try to keep your comments concise this evening. We do have a number of other items to cover on the agenda this evening, including the beginning of our 2017 budget process, which is going to be rather lengthy. So we would encourage you to please keep your comments concise, and I'm actually going to set a time limit this evening for each speaker of no more than five minutes. So Vice Mayor Hawkins will have a timer, and we'll give you some signals on that. Certainly, if you can keep your comments under that, we'd appreciate that as well. So with that, we'll open it for the general public input, if anyone would like to address Well, seeing no one, we will... If you could please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lance Earl. My address is 2530 Big Canyon Road. That's in Rockland, Idaho. I am not a resident of Twin Falls, but I'm involved in Twin Falls in a couple ways. I have just started writing columns for the paper, and I am the lead representative for a group that we started here a few months ago called the Men Too. And I'm here today because... And I'm going to film this for our records. I'm here today because I have noticed that Twin Falls has made the news, national news, a lot lately over the immigrant problems that you have right here, especially since the rape or molestation, or whatever it was, of that young girl. And I've been very disappointed as I have watched the people from both sides. I don't believe anyone has yet addressed the core foundational problems that we have here, and so I'd like to do that tonight. And I would like to start by first stating that I would assume that most of you can remember swearing an oath to protect and defend the Constitution. If you remember that, would you affirm that you did? Mr. Tockington doesn't remember? That'll...
Nice try at your humor.
Well...
It's your nickel. Talk.
Okay. I also am wondering if you are interested in upholding that constitutional oath, and that's what I want to talk about tonight. I'm going to make my comments specifically to the council and to our police chief, who I understand is sitting in the rear. The Constitution of the United States says very clearly in the Tenth Amendment that all powers not specifically granted to the federal government remain with local government and with the people. And so I have some questions that I would like to ask of you.
So before you start asking your questions, I would like you to know that our intent is not to answer questions on the spot tonight. So if you have questions, we'll certainly... Those that we can answer, we will.
Fair enough.
Those that we cannot, we will certainly get back to you with responses.
Fair enough. I'm wondering if anyone on this council, or if our police chief, can point out the constitutional article that authorizes the federal government to manage immigration in the states. I'll help you out. It's not there. You can't. I'm wondering if any of you can point out the constitutional article that allows the federal government to take money out of my pocket and out of every pocket of the citizens of Twin Falls, every pocket of the American people, and not only that, to borrow against our children and our children's children's future. I'm wondering if any of you can show me the constitutional article that allows that? I'm assuming not, because it's not there. And so I guess what I'm going to ask you now is why in the world have you not opposed this? Not because you're anti-immigration or pro-immigration, but because you've sworn an oath to the Constitution? I would like to know why you have not opposed this federal abuse here in Twin Falls. Now, we have a prosecutor who stated very clearly, at least in an article that I read, he said that it's a federal matter. I would like to know if you are intent on upholding your constitutional oath, why have you not challenged him when he had said it's a federal matter, when in fact, the Constitution says precisely that it's otherwise? We have a police chief back here who has allowed the FBI to come and join in his investigation. And so, sir, I will ask you, what part of the Constitution allows the federal government to be involved in policing activities inside the states? I'll save you some time. It is a violation. You cannot do that. We have a United States attorney who has interjected herself in here and actually made threats to anybody that may want to say something about this case of this young girl. And I would like to know why you people have not stood up and said that she has no authority here and told her that no more intervention will be allowed. I'm asking you why you haven't done that. And specifically with this police chief, who has stepped over the line, not only on this issue of allowing the FBI to come in and rob the people of Twin Falls of their rights and to assert power, I want to know why you, the city council, why you, the mayor... Sorry about that. Why you have not asked for his resignation? If he's going to violate the Constitution of the United States, he has an empty uniform, and he should not be here. I would like to know the answers to those questions. Will I get an answer?
Well, we will certainly address issues with policy and procedure. Personally, I believe that much of what you're talking about is your interpretation of the Constitution.
Well, then, let's dig it out.
So, Mr. Earl...
Mr. Mayor, let's dig it out, and let's go through it.
Mr. Earl, your time has expired. We will get back to you on the issues that you have raised. Thank you.
Okay. To the rest of you people out there, if you are a tire of the trajectory that our nation is on, that our state is on, that our city is on, there are things that we can do, and it starts with taking care of this and taking care of that, and I will be right outside this door because I would like to help you do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council this evening?
My name's Harry Edwards from Jerome, Idaho, and I'm here to speak. I'm going to donate my time to Mr. Earl here.
So again, if you would like to address the council on a broader issue, I would ask that you contact our city manager's office, and you ask to be placed on the agenda for the appropriate amount of time to have that discussion.
Sir, if I may be blunt, I've just been given five minutes. I made my point. Now I would like some answers, if you would. Sir, speaking to you, Mr. Mayor, what part of the Constitution allows you to allow the federal government to import people into this state, into this city? There is none. And so I would like to talk a little bit about what immigration would look like.
Mayor, you're the parliamentarian. You can call this time or not.
Again, sir, your time is finished.
I've got five minutes that he gave me.
So, Fritz, excuse me, I'd like to ask for advice of our legal counsel. If you would please step aside from the microphone.
Excuse me. You're not adding this time, are you? Before we get legal counsel?
You know, I'm going to get advice from our legal counsel. Thank you.
Let's get some counsel. Well, let's do it.
Okay, so we do not allow people to give time to other people during the course of any public hearing. You have never permitted it during the entire history of the city council, so I would suggest that you not do it here tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Fritz.
I would suggest that no one has ever asked before.
So, Mr. Earl...
I don't think there's precedent.
I would also say there's no time limit mentioned on this agenda for public input.
Well, I, at the beginning of the meeting...
Have they done that before?
Yes, we do it quite often with public input.
Well, why isn't it publicized?
We do it quite often.
Why isn't it publicized?
I'm sorry. We'll make sure that we write it on the agenda next week.
We need to.
The time may be limited.
Do you tell everybody how much time they're going to have to speak in an open forum?
No. Okay. Mr. Edwards.
What do you want?
I want you to stop talking.
Why?
Because I'm trying...
I have five minutes. I'm still talking. This is my five minutes.
So, Mr. Earl, your time has expired, and you cannot address the council anymore. If you wish to address us next week, or if you wish to be...
Maybe we can have a conversation.
If you wish to be at...
Can I answer his questions?
Yeah, let him answer my questions.
He has the time.
Yeah. Is my time up yet?
Are you going to address the council on something that we can actually address with you, or are you going to just spout at us?
Doesn't it say you're general public input?
General public input.
I'm giving you some input.
Okay.
Okay, it's general, and it's public. And my time is... I would ask you to add my time from when this gentleman got up and...
I paused the timer.
Okay.
May I just make... Since I do have this time, and you're not allowing him or myself, may I just make one comment about what immigration would look like if it were constitutional in Twin Falls? Take me one minute. Will you allow that?
Yes, please. Will you take one minute, and then will you please let us move on with the agenda?
I certainly will. What would immigration look like in Twin Falls if we were constitutional? My grandfather was a Danish bastard. He grew up at a time and in a place where being an illegitimate child was very difficult. He grew up in an orphanage. When he was a teenager, he snuck away. He arranged passage on a ship in exchange for his work, and he came to America. He could not speak the language, he had no money, but he had a dream. And as an immigrant, no one offered him a handout. Mr. Tockington said that what's going on here is the same as when his family came from the potato famine in Ireland. Is that correct? I heard something about that. I read something about that. The thing is, it's not at all the same thing. My grandparents, your grandparents, they came here at great personal sacrifice. They came here with no one offering them free food, free housing, or at least subsidized, subsidized incomes. They came here with a dream, and they made it work. Now, my grandfather never amounted to much. He was just a sheep herder. But you know what? That's everything to an orphan boy from Denmark. And that, and he was a productive citizen. If you people...
Mr. Earl, that's your minute. Thank you.
If you people would go back to the constitutional principles, the people that would be coming here would be the cream of the crop. They would be coming here to work and to integrate and to be American citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I still have any time?
Mr. Edwards, if you'd like to address this on your issues, you're more than welcome to.
Do I have time?
You have one minute.
You do.
This is the kind of thing that kind of is deceiving to a lot of people. They think that our city council is out looking after the citizens of the city, in cases they are, in cases they aren't. This is an example of that. We've asked you guys to work out some details on this. We get to write down our names, and we get for you guys to have time to answer the questions. You should know this off the top of your head, what's going on in this community. And I think it's deceiving to say otherwise. And I'm asking for all your resignations. You need to stand up and resign your position if you cannot justify your oath to office. I think you need to resign. And we're calling for your resignation, and we'll continue to call for your resignation and get people in here that really have a concern for the community. Now, you proposed to have a concern for the community, but we don't see it. I asked you in a previous meeting...
His minute is up.
...a previous meeting whether or not you had contacted the mother and father of the victim of the alleged rape, and nobody's gotten back to me. Nobody's gotten back to anybody. So thanks so much for doing your job. We really appreciate it.
Is anyone else wishing to address the council?
Julie Ruff, Twin Falls County. It's disappointing to have you limit time, though I do have compassion on you being here very, very late. But again, you know, we do need to have dialogue about these issues, and that's why we're bringing them forward. It's disappointing to have arrogance as your response. That's a disappointment, and it doesn't help with relationships in the community whatsoever. You, Sean, asked that we email you, and you would respond?
And you emailed me a question that was irrelevant to this entire discussion?
I thank you Suzanne for answering me. I thank you Dawn for answering me. Even if it was a difficult question, I appreciate your respect. I appreciate that you were willing to say where you stood. I haven't used that, but I just want to say thank you. That's very honorable, and you've honored your seat. Your colleagues have not. Doesn't matter what your opinion is. The response is what you said you would do. You said that to me. So that's what you ought to have done.
I apologize for not returning your email.
Thank you. I'd like to bring up the fact I see on here on your agenda, you have an executive session where you're going to consider a public officer. I'd like to make a recommendation that that actually be a person that you have in your private meetings or your closed subcommittees. I know that in 2013, an IDOG group, which is Idahoans for Openness in Government, wrote an article, and they did actually point that out, that this particular council does have private meetings. It was even recommended in this article that you actually take minutes so there wouldn't be another person needing to be hired for that, so that there wouldn't be closed-door meetings. So I can give somebody this article if you're interested in reviewing it. But I would just make a recommendation that private meetings, subcommittee meetings, they need to be open, just like IDOG pointed out. And I will recommend that you consider that when you're considering this item for another person to be hired, that you actually maybe would hire them for the position of taking the minutes on those private meetings. If you want to know more, I can hand you that. I'm also here to invite you to Brigitte Gabrielle. We're bringing her into Twin Falls. I don't know if you know that. She'll be here on the 4th. I'd like you to be informed. I believe you need to be informed. I know that you know what your side believes. I understand that, and you're very, very doggedly hanging on to it. I would encourage you, as leaders of this community, to listen to the other side, respectfully, if you are able, listen to the other side, be willing to attend the meetings that we invite you to, even if you disagree. Out of respect to the community, I'm asking you to attend the meetings of the people we bring into this community, and that way, at least, we know that you're actually trying. You're trying to understand these bizarre people that come from a totally different position than you do. So I would invite you... I have these invitations here. Next time I come, I'll actually bring you a ticket, so that each of you will have a ticket, and we will save you a front row seat, if you'd like to do that. So I will hand you this out, and I'm going to hand you out a little flyer, and I will be done. Does anybody want this article?
I'll take it.
Thank you.
Ms. Ruff, to respond to your comments about the executive session, the executive sessions this evening are in compliance with Idaho State Code.
I know, but those are...
I'll take your reading material.
What would you like to... I don't read it when you're supposed to be doing something official.
Your nickel.
It's more than me. It's my life, and I'm invested. You're just like you are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council this evening?
Hi, I'm Shane Brown, and I live in Twin Falls. The first thing I would like to do is I would like to stand in support of our local government. I would like to thank the mayor and the city council and the city police for upholding the rule of law in our community and for granting equal protection and justice to all members of our community, no matter where they come from. I was born and raised in this valley. I've taught here for 20 years. I'm a gun owner. I have a shotgun and a rifle, and I buy shells every couple of years, because that's all I need to get my window, fill my tag. A few weeks ago, some people that I love and respect and that are vital members of this community were threatened with horrible, horrible threats by people from outside of this community. And for the first time in my life, I considered and I went and I bought a pistol for protection. There is a group of people that have come into our community and have infiltrated our community and have changed it from what I have been born and raised in, though, in this community. These people have brought fear and anger and ignorance, and I'm glad that we live in a country where everybody can go wherever they want to, but these outside political groups that have taken this horrible tragedy and used it to bring their political agenda into an inappropriate place have created an atmosphere in my community, in our community, that I really don't like. I do not like living in fear. I do not like feeling that I need to own a handgun. But after hearing and seeing some of these threats that have come through to people that I know, I feel it's my responsibility to do that. And this liberal is exercising his Second Amendment rights. So I just want to reiterate one more time that I support this council, and I support... If I had more than five minutes, I would enumerate the number of amazing experiences and beautiful experiences I've had with refugees in this area. I've had them to my home for dinner, tried explaining to a boutonniere's family why you do Easter eggs and chocolate bunnies on Easter. They're wonderful and amazing people. I would like to ask the people that I've seen speak here two weeks ago and this week as well, if you are so concerned about this young woman and her family, why would you drag them into a public forum? And if that is really the issue, then why are you not addressing the same issue that happens to many, many, many dozens of children in our communities every year? I am very grateful for our city police and for our city council for offering those protections for both the accused and for the victims. We live in a society, the fewer are accused, then you go to court, you go through the system of law, and then you receive your due punishment. We do not give punishment based on hearsay and what we read on the internet. So the only way to combat ignorance and prejudice is through education and compassion. And fear and anger can only be healed through the rule of law and the equal application of justice and mercy. And I thank you, city council, and the police, and all the people that work for this city. Even though I may disagree with you on many issues, I am very thankful that you do uphold the laws of our land and give us the opportunity to voice our opinion and to feel safe in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council during the general public input? Seeing none, we will move on with the balance of our agenda. First item is the consent calendar. Council wishes. Suzanne Hawkins.
I request that we poll item five so we can discuss it a little more thoroughly.
All right. Don Hall.
I would move approval of the consent calendar minus number five.
Second.
A motion by Don Hall, seconded by Ruth Pierce, to approve the items one through four on the consent calendar. Is there any discussion?
I'll go ahead.
Suzanne Hawkins.
I don't know if we have anybody in the audience who can help with this one, but number five on our consent calendar is a request on behalf of Rock Canyon Events...
Excellent. Suzanne, the motion was for the one through four, so we can go ahead and take care of those first.
Sorry, sorry.
Chris Tockington.
Move passage of the consent calendar, one through...
We have a motion, and a second already. Is there any discussion on items one through four?
No discussion.
Seeing none. Sharon, roll the call, please.
Suzanne Hawkins.
Yes.
Nikki Boyd.
Yes.
Sean Beriker.
Yes.
Chris Tockington.
Yes.
Don Hall.
Yes.
Ruth Pierce.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. And now we can take up item number five.
Thank you. So item number five is on behalf of Rock Canyon Events to approve their next concert, which is scheduled on July 27th from 3:00 to 9:00. I don't know if there's anybody available, but we did have some complaints from the last concert series out there.
I mean, we're here to represent officers, and I hope you're...
I think we'll let Officer first of all come up and help us here. Just to... The emails I received were in regards to security and cleanup after the event, and evidently, there was some...
Okay, I spoke with Kurt Gallegos at length regarding some issues that came up during their last concert, and some of the, I guess, anecdotes that he had were, there was only 70 people at his concert the last time. The complaint of trash was of glass bottles that were in the parking lot, and he assured me he doesn't sell glass bottles. He spoke with the actual person... the actual person who wrote that email at length, and I believe they came to an understanding of how they were going to help one another. And as far as the noise complaints go, I spoke with the complaining person, and we have a... We have worked out a deal where if she feels that it's a disturbance against, she's just going to call me directly. So, and then I will take care of it.
Okay. My understanding from the email was that it had not been resolved as of 4:30 this afternoon.
What had not been?
The parking lot, the trash, and that issue, that that was still an unsettled situation.
Okay. I did not speak with the person who wrote the email. I always spoke with this side of the complaint.
So that parking lot is city property. Is that correct?
I believe it is, up until it gets to in front of those, the row of bars that are right there.
I think...
You know where I'm talking.
So do we... So those property owners then could fence off their property if they don't want people from the event to park there? Is that an option, or...
I guess it could be. The... Mr. Gallegos has assured me that they, every time after their event, they go around and clean up the trash. So he is adamant that he does not know where that trash came from. I went out there the night of their last concert and saw that they just had a very, very small crowd, but there were people out picking up trash and things. I didn't, you know, see where they went, but I also noticed that the two bars that are in that area were just jam-packed with people, so it could possibly come from them as well. And that's, that is my assumption.
Okay. Thank you.
Don Hall.
I would just add, Sergeant, that I've talked to the complaint, and he says they have not worked it out, and that there are still issues with trash. And I think that that was one of the major concerns when Mr. Gallegos and his brother came regarding this issue about noise and lights and trash, and there's businesses in that area. And when it's left to one business owner or a couple of business owners to clean up somebody else's mess, obviously, that's, that's not the way that we should be running our businesses. So I'd really like to maybe hear from the gentleman that's representing the Gallegos, and maybe they have some input, you have some input. But again, that was one of our major concerns when we approved to be able to do this. I like having venues and situations like this in our community, because I think it adds to our community, gives us something to do, but it's got to be managed well.
Yeah. It's very understandable. And rest assured...
Could you, just for the record, could you speak your name?
Oh, sorry. My name's Steve Roberts. I'm here and representing Rock Creek Amphitheater. I actually live in Polidough. I grew up with the Gallegos Brothers. I know the family very well. I've known them my whole life. They're very stand-up people. They take their jobs and what they do very serious. That's why neither of them could be here today. They are off on their own venues, on their own jobs currently. So they asked me to be here today. I can assure you that we do put forth every effort to make sure that all the trash gets picked up. I personally assist them with that. We stay up, we walk the areas. You know, the venue goes till 9:00. We're usually till 10:00 or 11:00 at night, tearing down, cleaning up. We make sure all the dumpsters are clean. We've made arrangements for dumpsters. All the additional arrangements have been made for security on this up-and-coming venue. We do expect it to be a little bit definitely bigger, you know, with Terry Clark. We hope to draw a bigger crowd for that venue. And so we know that there is going to be additional work with that. I come, I personally, myself, come up each and every week. I mow the grass, and then I walk the perimeter. And I'm, matter of fact, as soon as I come from mowing the place, and then as soon as I get done, I'm actually going to go back, and I'll walk the perimeter, and I pick up the trash and things each and every week. So what gets carried from week to week and what happens on the weekends when we're not there, it's kind of tough. But we do everything. We keep the weeds trimmed down. We keep the trash picked up the best we can, even when it's not ours. You know, we want the place to look good. We want people to draw to it. We don't want it to look like it's a half-put-together situation. These guys take it very serious. They're hoping to provide a good service, a good experience for everybody. And yeah, what's one of our big things is we don't want anybody with glass bottles inside there. We don't want to have any issues or concerns. Deal with that. Adds weight to garbage. There's a lot of things. So none of our vendors do supply any glass bottles. We ask that everything be either cans or cups. Even the wine is in plastic containers. So we work really hard on that. Let's see, I was just going to look at my email here. Sorry, I apologize. I wasn't quite ready for you. So as far as for this venue, we do have six private individuals for security lined up, plus two Twin Falls police officers. We've made arrangements for if the venue goes over $2,000, that we'll get an additional two Twin Falls Police Department officers. We do have traffic control. We've got individuals assigned and set up for that. We do have the garbage detail already in place. Dumpsters are scheduled to be there. We've got all the bags and everything all ready for that. Evening at Terry Clark, the doors would open at 6:00. She goes on at 7:00. There is no opening band, so it'll be just her concert that will, that will have the music and the sound. You know, there may be some background music playing while we're setting up and things like that and testing instruments. Band will finish at 10:00. Garbage detail will happen directly after that. Follow up on Wednesday with a final walkthrough on Thursday. That's our set agenda. Hope for that answer to your question.
Well, I would just say, I think it's imperative that you reach out to the neighbors and mend some fences here, because, because obviously, they have some concerns, and we need to be good neighbors. There's nothing worse than you coming out the next day to your business, and you're going out and cleaning somebody else's, you know, garbage. So when you say you walk the perimeter, I would probably broaden the perimeter a little bit and be a good neighbor.
Yeah. We'll do, we'll definitely make forceful efforts to that. You bet.
Thank you.
Travis Ruffwiler.
So I've asked Renee Johnson to stand up and explain exactly where we're at in our special use permit process. As you recall, the council passed a ordinance allowing for this to be defined as a special use, and then this has then been taken out by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I thought, Renee, could be appropriate time to provide an update.
I will. I'll just give you current status of that process. The Gallegos Brothers did come through. They were granted a special use permit to allow this venue to occur without coming to see you every time they wanted to do this. But there were some conditions that were placed on that permit, one of which was addressing the fence, making sure that the fence that was approved temporarily by HPC came back for a permanent status. So they are on the Historic Preservation Commission agenda on the 18th. I asked Mark and Eric to come forward to you and especially that category this evening, just in case Historic Preservation had a concern with the fence being permanent, or if they put a time limit on it, I felt like it would be an appropriate mechanism for them to come to you for this event this time, and then hopefully the issues will be resolved. I just didn't want kind of a hiccup in the process. I talked to them also, along with Ron, when there were some complaints. I believe that these gentlemen are very sincere on following through with their promises. I think sometimes, according to what they had told me, some outside events occurred. They tried to take care of them, but they evidently missed some of the issues. As far as addressing the parking, all of the parking in that area is either public parking on street, or it's urban renewal parking, which is public. Anybody can park anywhere. So if there's some folks that have some private parking lots and they don't want them parked there, they can post them, and if somebody's parking in there that is not a customer of theirs, they can contact the police. So you shouldn't see them again through this type of a process, so.
Thank you, Renee.
Any questions at all? No? Okay.
Chris Tockington.
Well, this is the second year, I think, of Rock Canyon events, and I think we should be extending a welcome to a new entrepreneurial group. I think we're splitting here as on minutia. This upcoming event, if they do get a crowd size of 2,500 people, is truly going to put the test to your commitment to run a well-organized show, to monitor it for proper activities, and of course, the cleanup. So let's cut them a little slack, for goodness sakes. I see more trash after a band concert sometimes than I've been aware of on these new events. That's overreacting on our part.
Don Hall.
You know, Chris, I don't think that we're overreacting. We're just trying to be cautious here, trying to protect the business, businesses around there. I think if they have legitimate concerns and they voice them to us, we should take that in consideration. I do agree with you that we applaud the Gallegos Brothers for their entrepreneurial ship and for providing this venue and this activity for our community. But again, I would just caution, you know, be a good neighbor.
Is there direction from the council on what you would like to do with the request? Chris Tockington.
I'd move to approve the original request.
Second.
Motion by Chris Tockington, seconded by Don Hall to approve the request for the concert on July 27th at Rock Creek Amphitheater. Is there any further discussion from the council? Chris Toc.
If 2,500 people do come here, some from outside, they're certainly going to be feeding the merchants, and I think we'll be hearing very good applause on that part.
Seeing no further discussion, Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Nikki Boyd.
Yes.
Sean Beriker.
Yes.
Chris Tockington.
Yes.
Don Hall.
Yes.
Ruth Pierce.
Yes.
Suzanne Hawkins.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Moving on with items for consideration, since we already took up number one. Item number two is request to adopt an ordinance vacating an irrigation easement on the north side of 3,600 North Road, approximately 850 feet west of Harrison Street South, in care of the city of Twin Falls on behalf of the Twin Falls School District 411. We have Renee Caraway Johnson. Hello, Renee.
I'm here today to ask you to, for your consideration to adopt an ordinance that will vacate a platted irrigation easement. It is an item you heard a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to refresh. Just to refresh your memory, the property, this is the middle school up here, Harrison Street 3,600. There is a platted easement right here at this corner for a PI station. It was discovered by the high school, or by the school district, that it was not in an appropriate location, and in working with the city, there is a new location that is right here. In order to vacate that, takes two public hearings. On May 10th, the Planning and Zoning heard this request. They recommended that the vacation occur, subject to a dedication of this location occurring concurrently with the vacation ordinance being adopted. Commissioner Reed seconded a motion, and all members of Planning and Zoning recommended that go forward with positive motion. On June 6th, that request came to you, the council. There was an open public hearing enclosed with no comment. Upon conclusion, the council voted to approve the ordinance, subject to the same condition as recommended by the commission. In your packet is an ordinance, a draft ordinance, for your consideration with the legal description, and this map will be included with that ordinance. If you choose to make a motion to adopt tonight, it will go to be recorded. I do have also in the packet that document ready to record that other easement. It's already signed and will be recorded at the same time. So thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
Yep.
Sharon, what's the ordinance number?
I move to place ordinance 2016-7, or whatever the correct ordinance is, on third and final by title only, subject to the new easement language, receiving the city engineer approval, be recorded prior to the council signing the ordinance granting the vacation.
I'll second that.
A motion by Chris Tockington, seconded by Ruth Pierce, to place the ordinance on third and final reading by title only, with suspension of the rules and subject to that condition. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Sean Beriker.
Yes.
Chris Tockington.
Yes.
Greg, or Don Hall.
Yes.
Ruth Pierce.
Yes.
Suzanne Hawkins.
Yes.
Nikki Boyd.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Sharon, could you read the title, please?
An ordinance of the mayor and the city council of the city of Twin Falls, Idaho, vacating the pressurized irrigation easement described below and providing for vesting of title to the property so vacated.
Suzanne Hawkins.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion by Suzanne Hawkins, seconded by Don Hall, to approve the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Chris Tockington.
Yes.
Don Hall.
Yes.
Ruth Pierce.
Yes.
Suzanne Hawkins.
Yes.
Nikki Boyd.
Yes.
Sean Beriker.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Next is a request to enter into an agreement with the Twin Falls Urban Renewal Agency regarding the construction of the downtown commons portion of the Main Street Renaissance project, and we have our city manager, Travis Ruffwiler. Welcome, Travis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I come before you with an agreement between the city of Twin Falls and the Twin Falls Urban Renewal Agency for the construction of the downtown commons project. As you recall, we entered into an agreement with the Urban Renewal Agency, and we oversaw with STAR the demolition of the Rogerson Building. And we used that kind of as a test to determine what those next steps would be. We spent time working with Phil Cushland, the interim director for the Urban Renewal Agency, as well as Ryan Armbruster from Boise as well, and Fritz Wonderlick, City Council, City Attorney, looking at these items to make sure that we were able to develop an agreement that allowed for the city to oversee the construction of the downtown commons project and have the Urban Renewal Agency have a vehicle in which they could feel comfortable in paying for those costs associated with that project. One of the reasons that we think that this is so important is because of how close that area of work is. When you start looking at the work associated with the city hall project and then also working on the Rogerson project, we were concerned that from an efficiency of contractor and use of resources, that it would be best to have one organization overseeing that project. And because the city has a relationship with STAR, and we've already gone through that CMGC process, we felt that it was appropriate to then develop an agreement to have the city oversee that. And we would utilize STAR to oversee that project, just as we would for the city hall project moving forward. As we go forward, one of the things that will happen is we want there an opportunity to be a larger, more input process when it comes to the design. This right here talks about what that construction will look like once that's designed, and we think that there is a process that will be defined, but it is not necessarily included in here. Once that design is complete, that design will be then turned over to the city, and through STAR, we will construct that project with the Urban Renewal Agency paying the cost of those bills. This project will follow the CMGC process. This project will follow the CMGC process as outlined in the Idaho code. It will be bid, and those items of bid will then be reviewed by the Urban Renewal Agency for approval, and then after that, the guaranteed maximum price, which is part of that CMGC process, would be ultimately presented to the city council for ratification after the Urban Renewal Agency has approved it. The Urban Renewal Agency considered this agreement at their meeting this afternoon and did approve it, and now it is before you for your review, comment, and consideration this evening. Phil Cushland and Fritz Wonderlick are both available to answer any questions that you might have as it relates to the agreement.
Thank you, Travis. Chris Tockington.
I'd like to ask both Phil and the city manager for their nod of agreement that this largely new, untested within the city of Twin Falls, cooperation between Urban Renewal and the city of Twin Falls for this fantastic improvement is going to be finished on or under budget, on or on schedule, on or under schedule.
So since this is an urban renewal project that is being funded by them and on their schedule, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Phil Cushland.
The only reason I bring that up is I think if we put our goals high at the very beginning, then it'll be easier to follow, rather than trying to do catch-up.
Welcome, Mr. Cushland.
Your honor, council members, again, my name for the record is Philip Cushland. I'm the interim executive director of the Twin Falls Urban Renewal Agency. We have similar concerns as that raised by Councilman Tockington in all the aspects of this project, that we're looking at a major piece of work here, and it's new to terms of these processes to the community. We went through a very laborious process at the Urban Renewal Agency to kind of conclude how best to manage a project in an older, built-up area where, when you open up the ground, there's always going to be surprises. And we found that in doing that, the CMGC process was the one that has the most flexibility and most control, and limits the risk to the public agency entering into the process. Having gone through that, we then went through the process of looking at who best to deliver this critical piece of the Main Street project, which is the commons. And given the fact that it's closely associated physically and conceptually with the city hall, and it would be potentially conflicting to have our contractors crossing each other's path in the construction period, we felt it was best to step back from our control of that and give it to the city's CMGC contractor. Through that mechanism, we believe that your interests are best protected in terms of having a guaranteed maximum price, a process in place that ensures that you're in control of any modifications of that, and ultimately, while it's an urban renewal project in terms of paying for it, ultimately, you're going to receive the deed to the ranch, if you will. So not only will you have the positive benefits being adjacent to your new home, you also have the long-term maintenance obligations associated with that. So we want to make sure that we're working cooperatively so that we give you something that is going to be priced right going in, and is priced right in terms of your long-term maintenance obligations. Can I guarantee you that? No. Can I assure you that we have done all that we can to minimize the risk to the public agency and the public funding? We have done all we can do to make sure that it's going to be brought in as we expect it to be. With that assurance, be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Chris Tock.
If I could just do a little follow-up. I'm concerned because I see the apparent crosscommunications we may have had, and I'll stand to be corrected if I'm wrong, on the intermountain gas and their upgrading of their lines. I get the idea that some of that was not following a schedule, or an extended schedule, or there were some surprises. Am I incorrect on that?
I don't have particular information on that gas conflict, so, Travis.
And having worked with utilities, if it can happen, it will.
Yeah, I think that the difference between this project and that project is this is one that is directly overseen by us. It is a project that is completely within our funding control, and it's completely within our scope and responsibilities. The intermountain gas project, while it was communicated that it was going to be going on, I think that there was also some vagueness, and I think that the city could have, and I'll take responsibility for this, we could have probably asked some different questions to understand the schedule and the duration, because when we looked at the original scope of the work, I'm not entirely certain that when we assumed short duration, that was expressed in the letter, that we had the exact same guarantee or understanding by the individuals who are performing the work. This is different in the fact that we have the ability to oversee that work and kind of move forward with that all along. In terms of the schedule, one of the things that I think that is important is there are lots of moving parts in this area. It's not only the downtown commons, but it's the Hanson Street that is in between both of those, as well as the city hall project. And all three of them are on a loose schedule to be completed somewhere between August and September of 2017. Now, what's also important is we have not gone out to bid on any of those projects yet. And so while we have hung a schedule out there, I think it's important that we are continuing to work through our contractors to understand what that looks like. But in terms of being able to understand the work, being able to deliver the product, I think it's best through the CMGC process, because the city is going to have the ultimate authority over that.
Thank you.
Well, I think this is a wonderful partnership, and this agreement just helps to solidify the effectiveness and efficiency that we continue to try to move all of these various moving parts together forward downtown for an amazing investment in our community, so I certainly would be supportive of it, and would entertain a motion. Suzanne Hawkins.
Excuse me. I move that we approve the request to enter into an agreement with the Twin Falls Urban Renewal Agency regarding construction of the downtown commons portion of the Main Street Renaissance project.
I second that.
Motion by Suzanne Hawkins, seconded by Ruth Pierce, to approve the agreement with the Twin Falls Urban Renewal Agency. Is there any discussion? Sharon, roll call vote, please.
Don Hall.
Yes.
Ruth Pierce.
Yes.
Suzanne Hawkins.
Yes.
Nikki Boyd.
Yes.
Sean Berger.
Yes.
Chris Tock.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Travis, how long is your presentation?
You know, I'm hoping that it's...
Half hourish.
Okay, so I give you the time, and I'm wrong, so I'm a loser all the way around here. I would say that if you wanted to take a quick recess...
I would like to take a quick recess for five minutes, and we will reconvene at 6:05.
Ready to gear up, this time of year, everybody in the state of Idaho that works for local government has to be producing a budget, with the exception of the school districts, they're on a slightly different fiscal year than we are. But all local governments, with the exception of school districts, are in this budget development season. And while this is one of many conversations that we will have yet this summer, just to take a minute to remind those viewing, as well as, you know, others that might be new to our process, we really started our budget review process in January of this year with the Long Term Planning Committee. Members of our organization at all levels sat, over the course of several months, vetting the needs of the organization, from a personnel, from a capital, an operation and maintenance, and they made a series of recommendations to me, as well as to the council. In turn, we responded and we shared about those recommendations, and over the course of the way, we've had a couple of different check-ins, and to make sure that is the budget that we're following really going to meet the objectives stated in the city's strategic plan, and is it accomplishing the goals and directives in a manner that is fitting in the eyes of the council. And so tonight, we're going to present to you this budget, and before we begin, I want you to know that while it's my obligation under state code to present to you this budget, this has really been created by many hands. Many hands that are here, many hands that have helped build a balanced, sustainable budget for your review and for your consideration. And we'll have this conversation tonight, and we'll have this conversation all the way through the end of August, in which, at that point in time, we will ask for your ultimate adoption. And so for the next eight weeks, we would ask that you would contain your excitement and enthusiasm as we vet the budget moving forward. This is Lori Race, our CFO's happiest time of the year. And it's kind of like Christmas for her. For others, we really look forward to Labor Day. And so with that, let us begin. So when I started this presentation earlier this year, and we had a conversation, and I had the opportunity to share with you what I truly believe to be the most important aspects of this year's budget, it really began, not only with the strategic plan, but a look at our internal organization, one of the eight focus areas of this year's budget, or end of strategic plan, but really, the emphasis, if you take a look, that every single one of those objectives, healthy community, a learning community, secure, accessible, environmental, prosperous, and responsible, are all delivered by dedicated public servants. See, there's not a single service that we offer inside the city that does not require dedicated public servants. Public servants who take their responsibilities serious, to deliver services onto the front lines, to create a community that is worth celebrating, to do things that we're proud of. And it's the men and women of the city of Twin Falls who I get to work shoulder to shoulder with every single day, that work hard and tirelessly to improve our community. And so we did a shift of this model of our strategic plan earlier this year, to really focus that it is the men and women that work for the city of Twin Falls that deliver those services, and that should be our focus area. So last few years, we started having a conversation with, we're going to tell you the end first, so then everybody could take a look and see what that is. And as I've shared many years, we shared what we believed to be the city's total taxable value, and we've erred. And not only have we've erred, but then we've had to come back and correct, if not once, maybe twice, several times. And it really caused a scattered conversation, and so this year, we thought that we're not going to guess. We, at this point in time, do not know what the city's total taxable value number is, and we may not know that until the first week of August. And so what I want us to do this year is to focus on our priorities, the things that we feel that we need to accomplish. And I can focus and share what we're spending, and the recommendations for expenditures, because that is what we have complete control over. And what's important to remember about a tax rate is that it is a mathematical formula that ultimately becomes a multiplier, that is then multiplied by the individual value of the property that it is being assessed. And there are so many different numbers that go into a tax rate, and knowing a total taxable value, that we've decided not to try to guess on all the variables, and that we'll present that information once we have that for you. In the past, it's kind of looked like an EKG, where some weeks it's been up, and other weeks it's been down, and it has not been fair to the conversation. So once we have a good number, we will move that forward. So what are we building this budget on? We're building these budgets based upon several conversations and the six key strategies and overarching objectives, and many of them remain the same, right? We want to complete strategic planning objectives, because our strategic plan governs and guides financial decisions, policy decisions, to help us realize the outcomes. That strategic plan was crafted by our citizens, and each and every year, we try to migrate towards becoming the community that the citizens who participated in this process, and who have actively and proactively shared their thoughts and dreams and realities, as we help to help this become a reality. We want to make sure that we are looking at sustainable fees and tax rates for service. We want to make sure that we're continuing to invest in our employees, and I shared with you in the beginning about why that is so important, that at the end of the day, we need to make sure we're investing in our infrastructure, water, sewer, transportation, and then those other pieces too, like trails, quality of life, quality downtowns, public art, all of those things that are infrastructure-driven. We also want to make sure that we're continuing to provide and pursue innovative strategies, because we always want to get better at what we do, that we don't simply remain satisfied, we don't rely upon the successes that we've had in the past, we constantly challenge how we deliver services to find a better way. We also want to continue to evaluate those services and hit specific target levels, and that's part of that evaluation through our national citizen survey process. So as you know, and as we share, the state code allows local governments to take the statutory allowed increases. That is a 3% increase in revenue, as well as the value of new construction and annexation. And this budget, right now, does that. But as we continue to take a look, there are also some things that we want to continue to have additional conversations with you about. See, a 3% increase does not necessarily translate into a 3% increase in property taxes, because it is spread across the total taxable value of the city. And you can see that a 3% increase is $546,000. That is what a 3% represents, and that the total of the value of new construction is $540,000. And so with those two statutory allowed increases, we're looking at having a total of $1,086,000 of new taxable revenue that's available for this budget. What's equally important is that the city does not use any of its foregone balance, and that foregone balance remains completely intact at $2,149,218. So this is what we do know. Again, it is the total spending, and when you take a look at the total net budget, you can see that it was $56,609,000, and up to this upcoming year, you can see that we're requesting $58,989,000 to be able to move forward. Those are spread into two main categories, tax-supported funds, those funds that receive some portion of their revenue stream from property taxes. That's the general fund. The general fund covers those services that you typically think of with government, police services, fire services, administrative services, economic development, streets, airport. Those are all part of our tax-supported funds, while the enterprise funds operate like small independent businesses under the city's larger corporate umbrella. Where we have the non-tax-supported funds are the water fund, where all of the funds collected for the water fund need to be used for the operations of the water fund, and same with the sewer fund, and the sanitation fund, and the impact fee, and so on. And so in total, we're looking at tax collections of the $34.4 million, $18.9 million are associated with property tax collections, and then you can see the tax rate. And the reason we don't know the tax rate at this point in time is because of the first bold, unknown number, that until we understand the total taxable value, we can't complete the math formula. But as soon as we can, we will, and we will share what the impact of this budget means in terms of the tax rate, and then we'll also be able to be in a position to help our citizens understand what their individual tax loads may be. Because this year, we also saw an increase in the homeowner's exemption, so some people are going to see that the total taxable value of the property may have actually decreased, and so an increase in the tax rate may not cause increases in their property taxes that are assessed by the city. And that's another important point. We can only focus... We can only focus on the taxes that are provided by the city. We have no jurisdiction or authority of what other local governments do. They are having their own independent conversations, and we can only control the spending that is proposed to function local city government in Twin Falls. One of the important things is taking a look at the new construction number. And this is where we start having some conversations about what do we do as we kind of move forward. So you can notice that in the total taxable value last year was $2,274 million, of which $36.1 or $36.2 million was associated with new construction, new construction activity that came onto the tax rolls. But what's important is if you removed the new construction value from last year's tax rate, you would have noticed that the city's total taxable value decreased by $26 million. So after the new construction last year, we saw a net increase of about $10 million, or slightly less than. So all of the properties inside of the city of Twin Falls decreased by $26,427,000, and we saw an increase in the total taxable value last year because of the new construction number, new properties that came onto the rolls that were not there in that prior year. Had we had no new construction, the city's total taxable value would have been diminished by over $26.4 million. So what does it mean? So being conservative, we took a look, and we thought that it would be about a $40 million new construction number, and we presented and built a budget for your consideration based upon $40 million of new construction. And right after, literally, right after, this thing is ready to go, it's balanced, it's put to bed, it is in full printing production, we receive word "good news" that the total taxable value, excuse me, the total new construction value of the city was actually 72% higher than what we had anticipated, and it was $68.591 million. That $68 million, that difference of $28 million has resulted in having nearly $225,000 of revenue, property tax revenue, if you take 3% and the new construction, that has not been appropriated in this budget. So while I say this budget right here incorporates all of the new construction and the 3%, it does not include the additional $28 million that was realized post-publishing. So there is $224,000 associated with new construction that is available, and then in addition to that, because we were being conservative in understanding exactly where our total taxable value would be, we also shelled about $61,000. So in total, there's about $300,000 of property tax dollars that have not been allocated to any project in this budget. And there are many, many choices before the city council. It is to invest in many of the needs that I've removed. I will tell you that there are lots of needs that were proposed by the long-term planning committee that I did not include into this budget. It may be a part or a piece that we reserve for something that hasn't been considered that comes up from our citizens, where our citizens kind of move forward and say, "We believe that you need to invest in X." And we take X, and we move that forward. So know that that's an opportunity for us to continue to look at between now and August, that no decisions have to be made, in fact, no decisions have to be made until you adopt the ordinance on the 29th of August, of how you intend and the best way to use that money. And it may be for Project A, and it may be not to do anything. This kind of illustrates that whole property tax rate, and this graph will again be completed once we understand what that multiplier is. But this is an important piece that we want to talk about, because this is something that we are seeing is having a true impact on the city's total taxable value, and that is the homeowner's exemption that is afforded to individuals who reside in properties, real property, that they claim is their primary place of residence. And what the state of Idaho says is that half, or up to $94,745 this year, whichever is less, will be excluded from taxation. This is a state code, this is nothing that we, we do not set this number, and it is then reduced by the assessor's office when individuals receive their individual property notices. And what you can see is that it was one time a flat rate, and then in 2007, I believe, it was indexed for the very first time. And you see it indexed up until 2009, and then we saw the recession, where the maximum opportunity for homeowner's exemption was nearly $105,000. And then, as property values fell as a result of the recession, so did the homeowner's exemption, because it was indexed. Unless the state changes the legislation that they enacted in this session, this is the last time that it will be indexed to the economy. Next year, for the property tax, it will be a flat $100,000 exemption, or 50%, whichever is less. And so it will be interesting to see what occurs in that process. What's interesting is, at a $100,000 exemption, the average home in the city of Twin Falls, according to the U.S. Census, is $144,000. And so as this changes, there is no impact to those individuals for the increased exemption, because they take the lesser amount of 50% or the maximum allowance. And so while this thing moves and plays, what's important is the average median property inside the city of Twin Falls does not receive a benefit from this. In fact, if you look, have arguably not received a benefit in this entire graph that we've provided, because at $75,000, it is still greater than 50% of the average median home value in Twin Falls today. This is the total net budget of all funds, and what we do is we try to again break that out graphically, so you can take a look at those two pieces. The total budget this year is $60,663,000. And so what is a net budget? The net budget is when we remove the transfers. So what's important is it's moving one money in our budget to another piece in our budget. In a sense, you can look at it as double accounting, because it kind of inflates. But what's important is we need to track, we need to account for those dollars, because each of those small independent businesses must pay the rents associated with human staff time that's needed. So the water fund doesn't have its own dedicated finance team. All of those finance professionals, human resource professionals, and management team members are all paid for by the general fund, and so we have a mathematical formula that allows for that transfer to occur. And you'll notice that this budget, in terms of net budgets, is actually less than the net budget that we proposed last year. And what does this budget include? $35.2 million is associated with those government funds, those funds collected by property taxes. And one of the things, again, as employees and dedicated public servants being our primary driver, my primary driver in this budget, to retain talent, to attract quality talent into our organization, to deliver quality public services, we are looking and requesting that we do a couple of very bold moves. Number one, we believe that it is critical that we move the table 5% to be able to keep up with market. That 5% was not a number that we just picked. It is based upon data that we look at in terms of what is our market doing and paying for other employees. And so a 5% movement of the table does not guarantee that every employee receives a 5% adjustment. Our table is fairly complex, and it has triggers, and it basically moves, it moves points. It moves the starting point, it moves the endpoint, it moves market. And we expect individuals to kind of move along our salary plan over the course of a series of years based upon tenure. We're also asking for a 5% pay adjustment for all employees who meet performance. And it's kind of a two-pronged approach this year, in addition to the 4% table move that you made earlier this year, to catch up. So as I shared, and while we've done really good things, our competition has actually moved faster. And them moving faster causes us to lose some of those quality employees that we hope to retain. And so with this, we hope that we can begin that and help on that retention. Now, I'll be the first to admit that salary is not the only reason why people leave, and people will continue to leave if you were even the highest-paid employer. But we do not want it to be the primary reason that people are leaving. That when they leave the city of Twin Falls and work in a similar organization and are making upwards of 25% more, there are issues. The other important thing is when it comes to attraction, that as we have retirements, and as we will continue to have retirements, the expectation is that we are replacing these individuals with quality talent that are going to be able to step in and are going to be able to lend their abilities to advance our organization. And in order to capture that scarce resource, we also have to be competitive there as well. See, one of the things that we're competing is a smaller workforce and smaller demographics, and there are fewer Generation Xers and fewer Millennials entering into the workforce. And so by simple economics terms, quality talent is a scarce resource. Scarcous resources can also be classified as luxury goods. Luxury goods are things that cause for a premium. I've never heard a citizen in our community say, "Send the police officer that you can afford at my greatest time of need." The expectation is we send quality people in their time of need always. And for us to be able to do that, we have to earn and follow our end of the bargain. We also want to make sure that we're competitive, because being competitive in the areas of property tax is not only inside the city of Twin Falls and fair for our citizens, but it's also as we try to secure a prosperous community, that making sure that our tax rate is appropriate and it is competitive is one of the most important things that we do. And so you'll notice that we illustrate these different cities, and you can see that the city of Twin Falls is in those areas of being competitive. The other thing that's important is you'll notice that the city of Boise and the city of Meridian are not included here. And one of the primary reasons is because they have the Ada County Highway District that oversees all of their road construction. Roads and transportation are one of our primary drivers of our budget, and one of our largest capital expenditures on an annual basis, and we've increased street funding again this year. So it's not a fair comparison, but looking at these, you can also take a look at what those individual tax rates are, those tax loads are, and when you spread that across a monthly payment, you can see that the city of Twin Falls remains incredibly competitive. We also like to point out that we use cash reserves for one-time projects. We do not use cash reserves or any portion of cash reserves to support ongoing operations. And in some, and so if you take a look at these projects, you can see the total cash reserves that are being requested moving forward. You'll notice that we talked about the bubble and moving that forward, that we talked about impact fee for the trails and the trail system that's also illustrated below. And then when you look at the enterprise funds, these are funds that collect and store reserves to be able to then be applied to long-term capital projects like impact fees. So we collect impact fees over a period of time, and we then provide those impact fees to complete a list of projects that are on defined capital improvements plan. So we collect those funds, and as we collect those funds, then we move those forward. And so those are the cash reserves that we're intended to use or recommending to use in this budget. In terms of personnel, you can see that we're adding one person. One person in this budget in the water fund. We spent a lot of time taking a look at our operations and making sure that the operations of our budget remain consistent, and we try to find ways in which we can take a look at how do we produce that widget, that good, that service, to make sure that we're being efficient. We look at fuel savings, we look at all different aspects in terms of operational costs, and you can see that our operational costs are increasing at less than 1% this year. Our capital budget is really, across all funds, is about $13 million this year. This excludes the monies associated with the city hall project. These are the ordinary capital improvements that are associated with all of the city's enterprise funds, as well as the tax-supported funds moving forward. That pretty much ends the initial oversight of the city's government-supported funds, and so I'm happy to answer any questions. It might be a good segue before we roll into the individual enterprise funds.
Done, Hal.
If I missed it, Travis, please forgive me, but I know that the solid waste district are proposing some...
It's coming up.
It's coming up. Never mind. I didn't miss it, then.
Yes, sir. Any other questions or comments? Suzanne, Hawkins.
I just wanted to point out that I noticed in our Parks and Rec budget, we did set money aside for baskets for our disc golf community. I know we don't have a location yet for that, but I wanted to make sure that the community knew that we are looking ahead at that project, and we haven't forgotten them.
I don't see anybody else jumping in on the government funds.
Okay, so now we'll...
Wait till this comes in.
Think I'm, you're laying in wait. All right, here we go. Enterprise funds. So each one of these, it's important to recognize, is each one of these individual funds are used to support the operations of that particular fund. So we collect a portion of the utility bill to offset water operations, which is debt, it's personnel, it's the operating cost, it's part of that transfer fee. And so we focus really on the big three: sewer, water, and sanitation. And so we'll have that conversation today, but in complete detail of the entire budget, not only the items that we're looking at now, but it's available online. We're available to answer questions, and we would also encourage the citizens to come and to share their thoughts about this budget as we move forward. So again, we provide a brief overview of what this looks like, and you can see that we're looking at having total expenditures decrease this year in the water fund compared to last year. And you might say, "Why?" And I'll remind you that we used nearly $3.1 million of cash reserves to assist in the creation of the Wills Booster Station south of town. And that project will be completed. And so that project is now no longer going to be funded, and so the reason that there is a $3 million decrease is because we are not using $3 million of cash reserves to be able to support and move forward. You'll notice that our operations increase are looking at increasing by about $271,000, and that is associated with fuel, and power, and training, and all of those things that cause us to move forward with operations. And with this budget, we originally came to the council and said, "We're looking at about 3% increases in the sewer fund, 3% increases in the water fund, and another increase associated with the sanitation fund." And we've been able to kind of, as Lori likes to say, really put that under the microscope and really kind of screw that down and analyze our expenditures. And really, the work of John Caton and his team, they've been able to find ways to reduce that to a half a percent, a half a percent increase in the water fund this year. And so what that means is that the average citizen will see a 19 cent per month increase, or a total annual increase of $2.28. That is right in line with what we would expect with the municipal cost index, as we see increases in fuel, potential increases in power. These are all absorbed at, right at the municipal cost index, and really, credit goes to John Caton and the members of his team as they take a look at all of the expenses and try to spread those across several years. Some of those highlights, as you kind of break down the total expenditure, so the total water fund this year is $10.18 million, and you can see the operational component is 4.96. The operational component also includes the human piece of that, so it really recognizes the fact that it's the human component, as well as what we would consider as common operation and maintenance that helped drive that forward. operation and maintenance that helped drive that forward. You can see that's an increase of $271,000. There's a decrease. Remember, the Will's Booster Station was about $3.3 million. $3.1 million came from cash reserves. There's that decrease there. You'll notice that there's a slight decrease in our debt service payment of $13,000, and that transfers this year are increasing by $56,000, and that is tied to the municipal cost index. And so that is a number that drives that forward. We're looking at $200,000 for continued water, groundwater drilling. We're trying to locate additional water places for diversion. We're looking at $200,000 for mainline water replacement, $250,000 for regional pressurized irrigation stations in accordance with our plan, and $300,000 for water meter replacement as part of the overall project this year.
Any questions on water while we're there? You want to stick with water? Chris Dock.
Not directly related to the user fees, but I've read some disconcerting news about water challenges. The latest is apparently with Idaho Power and Swan Falls agreement and its possible interference with our water right. And I know that we don't have enough answers or don't even know the question. I want to make sure this remains a viable high priority, along with our threats from the state water master, that we will have defense funds available to protect and to guarantee that our water is not taken away because we conserve it. That, I mean, I've just thrown a lot of things in one, but water is absolutely our lifeblood.
I completely agree. Completely agree.
Do you know more about the Swan Falls Idaho Falls?
So the Swan, yeah, so the Swan Falls agreement has been in place for 30-plus years?
Long time, yeah.
And, and what it, the Swan Falls agreement, Fritz can, everything I know about is from Fritz, and so we'll see if I'm a good student or not. It really talks about what minimum stream flows are at gauges as we kind of move forward. And if those minimum flows are not met, then there's an automatic call provision that causes individuals to have to curtail their uses. We continue to look at that. We continue to monitor that and try to understand exactly how those are going to impact not only our existing water rights, but also, more importantly, the Sunny Brook waters right that we're looking at completing through that process to transform into a usable right for us. And so we're aware of that. Our team is aware of that, and we continue to take a look at that to make sure that we can do what we can. But it's also important to recognize it's part of a larger water issue, that it involves many, many users of that water, and if minimum flows in the Snake River do not hit certain triggers and certain thresholds, then, then there is an automatic call provision associated with that to curtail use.
And I think it's also tied together under the dispute over consumptive use. The city not being a consumptive user, but if we are, then that threatens the stream, stream flows.
Sort of. We're in the process of putting a report together for the Department of Water Resources on our Sunny Brook application, and we've got good data showing that we're, we're, we're sort of not a consumptive user.
Right.
Because if you measure what, what goes out through the wastewater treatment plant and what we pump...
Yeah.
In the wintertime versus the summertime, we know where most of our water is going, and it's, it's going for...
That's our position, but it seems like there's challenges to that.
Well, yeah, there, there are always challenges, but we think we're putting a pretty good case together for that. It's a municipal use. They want to call it a consumptive use. We think we can show them pretty well that it's not really very consumptive.
Yeah, so what's important about the Swan Falls agreement is it has no impact on our existing water rights now, namely at Blue Lakes where we pump. This would only impact the Sunny Brook Springs right and any other rights that we might acquire at a later point in time that have a direct connection to the Snake River. So our Blue Lakes right is immune from any Swan call, Swan Falls call provisions. It's also immune from, right now, currently, the way they've drawn the map, from any of the other call provisions that the Coalition of Cities have been really kind of working through their different water call provisions. The next is the sewer fund, and again, this is really everything associated with the sewer plant, from the collections as well as the treatment that is operated, the treatment facility is operated by CH2M. Again, this is a complete and total fund, and so it's going to cover all the operational costs, the debt services costs, the transfers, and the capital as we move forward. This budget here is an incre, is a decrease of $209,000 compared to the prior fiscal year. You'll notice that we are looking at a 2.5% increase this year, not the 3% that we're talking about, and it's largely to ensure that we're meeting our bond covenant ratios. That total is about $6, excuse me, $0.62 per month, or $7.42 on an annual basis for that, for that total. When, when you look at the, the total fund, you can see that there are just slight increases in the operational, a decrease in the capital. Again, that's how we've used and paid for capital projects in the past. The highlight of the capital portion, again, we're continuing with that mainline replacement, and then a miscellaneous capital improvements of $170,000 associated with that, the wastewater treatment facility, as well as other parts onto that system. So this is one of the changes. So originally, we were thinking that this was going to come in at a slightly lower rate. This is the sanitation fund. This is the fund that covers all of the solid waste and curbside recycling. You'll see that over the course, since the program started in, in single-stream recycling, that we've diverted over 10,000 tons from the landfill. And I think that is something to be very, very proud of. One of the things that we're looking at in terms of our citizen survey is our citizen satisfaction with our recycling program has kind of diminished a little bit, and so we want to spend some time understanding what that looks like. There is a correlation possibly between the time in which we left recycle bank and the time in which we started to see a decrease in the tons. And one of the benefits that we saw was really that communication, that intensive communication and education piece. And so we want to spend some time understanding, how do we replicate that communication and piece to remind individuals the importance of recycling, to ensure that it is always at the forefront of their mind? Recycling is, is a learned behavior, and it then becomes habit, and I think the city needs to do a really good job with its partner in PSI in driving home the value and the importance of recycling.
Don Hall.
Travis, I would also say, I was going to touch on the education piece. Some of the feedback that I get on recycling is always, "Well, you don't take glass, you don't take glass." And I, and I know that we need to educate folks and re-educate them and remind them that we can't, and, and there's no market for it, and, because there's, you know, I think that's some of the dissatisfaction, but we have no control of that.
Yeah, in, in fact, some communities that participate in glass actually pay to have glass disposed. They will actually pay additional funds to move glass to different types of glass recycling facilities. That is an option that the city could look at. However, it's not without its cost. What's also important is that right now, it actually costs PSI to deliver the recycling. And so they're a partner with us in this process, and they actually, over the course of the last several years, have actually had to pay to get rid of recycling. And, and there's a benefit to that, and that benefit is, you know, longer life at landfills, longer and better stewardship of our environment. So it's an important program that we continue, but recognize that recycling today does not pay for itself because of the commodity. Also, from the time in which we presented the first budget, we had learned that there is a possible increase that could come from what we call the tipping fee. And that fee is passed on to us through the county by, and it's created by the Idaho Solid Waste District, and that fee is based upon per ton and, and capital moving forward. What's important about that fee is just as the city of Twin Falls has fixed costs, so do some of their operations, and, and they're continuing to spend some time sharing with us about what that fee is, and should that fee go into effect? We've calculated it here. We'll see that the current rate will go from 16.52 to 16.90, or 38 cents per month, or 2.32 percent. We were estimating about a one and a half percent, about a one and a half percent increase associated with our PSI contract, that we're continuing to work and negotiate. That's what we had plugged in. The, the additional seven tenths of, of 1%, nearly, excuse me, eight tenths of a percent is associated with the increase associated with the tipping fee that would be passed on to all of our customers.
Chris Dock.
But the solid waste is justifying this rate increase on the volumetric load that they have to dispose of. And a couple of years ago, I was fighting with commissioners to have them recognize our recycling. And this 10,800 tons that we've recycled, as, as a minimal impact to the landfill, is very significant to us. But I think, as I recall, in the charter of solid waste, they even brag about prioritizing recycling. And I wish we could at least send a message telling them to take that off their, the stated goals. If they don't offer us any sort of recognition for the 10,000 tons we've recycled, yeah, we probably are going to have to end up paying the fee, but it's largely also because of the multi-county basis, and the small counties are setting the fees, the big counties are paying the, the cost for it. But I would like to, on another sanitation issue, last year, and I think Greg is kind of seeing eye to eye with me now, we should at least consider in this next year, providing or doing a study to see what we can do to take the unfair burden for solid waste disposal off of a certain category of Twin Falls residents. Senior citizens living alone has some of the highest poverty rates of any demographic, and they currently are being charged despite their often minimal waste distribution. They're being subsidized, they are subsidizing the homeowners. I would really like to ask the council, not city manager right now, to try to do this study, to determine the, how many people at a certain age category and an income level might qualify for this program. It's possible that we could do it certainly on a name basis rather than a dress, since people move, but it is a terrible burden. Some of the seniors I talk about, they don't fill out one of those big blues in two or three months. They could still dump it every, every day or every week, excuse me. There could be a simple computer credit given back to a certain category of people. So especially for the two new council, I would hope you check into that a little bit because there are some people that are on very fixed means that are paying for my prolific dumping.
Don Hall.
I think as part of their justification for the potential increase in the tipping fee is capital expenditures with, with their transfer stations. And if you've ever been out to this transfer station on a busy day, stand by. It's very challenging to even get in. So they're, they're looking at some redesign, and then I think also to look at more land, more, more capital expenditures for the future for the landfill as well. Is that correct, Travis?
That's my understanding, is that they're looking largely at the transfer station and improvements that they need to make there to continue to make sure that it's, you know, as Josh had shared with us, safe for, for their folks and also continues to be accessible and user-friendly for, for their patrons of, of the transfer station.
Our city population's growing, Don, so of course we're putting more trash around.
So right now, when you take a look, this is what we're looking at right now, the total monthly bills for the average customer for utility bills inside the city of Twin Falls is right at $90. And how, let me take a minute to describe how we define that average user. That is someone who uses 18,000 gallons of water per month, that they hit the cap of 4,000 gallons of sewer, and that they also have curbside solid waste recycling that's not a one-can rate, but more of a both full can as well as a, as a recycling can. And you'll notice that that increase is $1.19 per month this year, and we're recommending that go to $91.19 based upon the expenditures that have been incorporated here. And again, we don't know what that property tax rate is, and we will continue to, to work. And, and once we have a good understanding and that number is provided to us, we will share that, and we will complete the rest of the mathematical formulas associated with this project. So with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions that you might have, and then we'll continue to have conversations each and every week wrapped around the individual focus areas as we continue to move forward.
Nikki Boyd.
Travis, I have a quick question. On sewer, it says 8,000 gallons, but you said that they reach a cap of 4,000?
No, 8,000.
You said eight?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
He said four. Good job catching him. I meant eight. I apologize.
I just was wondering, okay, thank you.
Chris Dock.
Just one little note of curiosity on the demo, the Rogerson building. There's quite a bit of recycling taken out of there, or it looked like recycling. Has Star told you, are they successful in finding Marcus for sending some of that old timber or the metal probably, but can you get us on that?
So we can certainly ask and see what they're doing. Our primary emphasis for the recycling was to continue with the lead certification. And so we really, recycling and being able to take those materials and reapply them to different uses is important. I know that we're looking at the old timbers, and Hummel's trying to find a way to incorporate those into the new city hall project, as we, as we've talked about.
Cool.
And so we'll continue to, to look, but I will get, we're meeting with Star and Hummel as part of our ongoing series of update meetings, and I'll ask them and then report back to the council next week.
Thank you. Travis, moving forward as these items are on the agenda, it will, it'll describe which focus areas or areas of the budget that will be discussed, right?
Yes.
I'm trying to remember back to the 16 meetings last year.
We will do that, and we will share each of those individual sections. The deputy city managers will also have an opportunity to share their sections of the budget, because really, I mean, what's important is, this has been, and it always is, an all-hands-on-deck And it's a thoughtful, sustainable course of action because of the many hands that helped create it. So again, great work by the members of the team. We've even thrown Jake into the mix. He's, he's probably done a lot more than he bargained for, but we wanted to make sure that Jake was having a quality intern learning experience associated with building budgets, which is really one of the foundational things that city managers do. So again, total team approach, and my thanks to everybody who helped build the document that's before you and to be vetted in the upcoming weeks.
Thank you very much. To echo Travis's comments from earlier, I would encourage the citizens who are watching or listening to be involved, come participate in these meetings and give your input on not only the topics and the recommendations that are in there, but items that you think we might have missed that need to be thought about. So look forward to hearing from them. And with that, I will open it up now, if there is anyone here in the audience who would like to address the council on the budget. Everyone's rushing to the podium. Well, seeing, seeing no one for that, we will move on with the agenda. Next, we have items from the city manager or the city council. Nothing from Travis? Anyone on the council have any items? Suzanne Hawkins.
Thank you. I just want to make the council aware that Paint Magic started this past weekend, and we're making good progress on our home. There was a great team of us Saturday getting off to a start, and I just got an email while we're here, our firemen have been out today, and it sounds like they've really tackled a major portion of it, so we're going to start painting tomorrow night.
Excellent. Travis?
Mr. Mayor, do you have just a quick announcement?
Yes, you do. Oh, yes you do.
Um, we're going to have a city fair, um, this Wednesday. Um, it is our continuing opportunity to showcase the different products and services and also kind of show the new temporary location of where we're at. Many, many departments are going to have, uh, updates on their projects on display. Uh, staff will be able to answer many questions, um, and I think it goes from three-thirty till about five-thirty on Wednesday, um, the thirteenth. So we encourage the citizens to come by and engage members of our team.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Don Hall.
I just want to mention that there was a community event yesterday at the city park, and, um, a lot of citizens got together, um, and wanted to just show some support, some unity within our community for our police department, for the lives lost recently. And, um, I, I thought it was a, um, a well-attended and well-intentioned event, um, trying to bring people together during these divisive, uh, times, so.
Thank you, Don. All right, next on the agenda is a request for two executive sessions. The first, uh, under Idaho Code seventy-four, section seventy-four, two oh six, one A, to consider hiring a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent wherein the respective qualities of individuals are to be evaluated in order to fill a particular vacancy or need. This paragraph does not apply to filling a vacancy in an elective office or deliberations about staffing needs in general. And section one F, to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated. The mere presence of legal counsel at an executive session does not satisfy this requirement. Chris Talkington.
Move for executive session be approved pursuant to two oh four, two oh six?
Seventy-four, two oh six, one A and one F.
One F.
A motion by Chris Talkington, seconded by Nikki Boyd, to adjourn into executive session. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote please, Sharon.
Don Hall?
Yes.
Ruth Pierce?
Yes.
Suzanne Hawkins?
Yes.
Nikki Boyd?
Yes.
John Berger?
Yes.
Chris Talkington.
Motion passes six to zero. We will not be making any decisions in executive session, nor will we be reconvening following the executive session. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.